Okay, welcome back, everybody. We're gonna move on to our next presentation. So, college and career readiness update.
Yes, we have two presentations for you today. So, we're gonna share the... We have a long partnership with the USC College Advising Corps, and they're gonna do the first part. And then, the second part, I'll call up Cindy Beto to talk about our job developer program. Because the whole issue in our district is to ensure that all of our students, when they leave us, are college and career ready. So, Dennis from the SC College Core Group, he'll start us off.
So, good morning, board. First and foremost, my name is Dennis Funes. I'm the program coordinator for the USC College Advising Corps. I actually oversee the District of Long Beach, so I oversee all fourteen advisors. But also, before I start, yes, thank you to the board and also Superintendent Steinhauser for hosting us and to talk about our program. So, the USC College Advising Corps is, first and foremost, is based off this... At a center at USC, the Center of Enrollment Research Policy and Practice, which is at the USC School of Education. A bit about our mission, essentially, is we place recent college graduates at high schools to serve two years full term to assist with everything college access related. A lot of... We work with all students, and a lot of the students that we work with are low-income, first-generation, and come from underrepresented communities. So, a lot of the things that we do is focused on... focusing on the whole college spectrum. So, working from the start of interacting with students, building that relationship. Our model is also a near-peer model, which essentially is since they are recent college graduates, they are... They kind of already have had college experience, and they're kind of very similar to age, but not really. And that kind of helps strengthen the relationships they build with students. But they focus on everything college access related, from college... From hosting college application workshops, financial aid workshops, making sure they do their health waivers, finding the best housing for them, et cetera. In addition to that, our advisors, who are at the high schools, another thing they do is strengthen the college-going culture of the school. So, essentially, is exposing college to all students, not just high-achieving students, middle-achieving students, low-achieving students, but all students. And with that, another thing we try to do is also make sure we follow the strategic goals that were placed by you all in terms of how do we meet college readiness for all students. So, what I am gonna do is show you a video a little bit more from two years ago from some of our prior advisors at Wilson High School, and so you can get an idea as well.
At first, like, you don't know what to do, and there's like so many different things that you have to do.
I didn't know anybody would accept me.
I feel like it's a big step forward.
It's... It's a big thing, being the first kid to go to college.
My name is Brandt Alcara.
My name is Adiva Meyer, and I'm a college advisor at Wilson High School in Long Beach.
I was one of the top students at my school. I was a valedictorian. Senior year, we got a college counselor for the first time. We didn't have any counselors or anything like that. And she urged me to not under-match for schools. So, she told me to apply these different places, and I ended up applying to Berkeley.
I didn't have that support. My father and I had to figure out everything on our own, and I was the first person in my family to go to college. So, it was a big struggle for us.
One of the most critical problems today is ensuring that we move more young people on from high school to college. The Advising Corps uses a near-peer model and addresses directly a lack of counseling for college and for college results. The students in the school see an individual much like themselves who has been successful. This is a very powerful message for them.
Good morning, Dennis, on the other side of the room.
A lot of them, when they're coming in, they don't know anything. And also, they have a big financial need. So, if they don't know about getting money for college, but they know it's expensive, then that's deterring them from applying, that's deterring them from even trying.
It's foreign language to them when they have to hear EPT, ELM, early start, early birth. They have no idea what any of that means.
Any questions about financial aid before we move on? Angela?
The students really care, and they want to go to college. The problem is, they don't think it's for them. And they typically undershoot where they're capable of performing. So, with our advisors coming in to say, "Look, I was able to do it, you can too."
It's very doable. I graduated in four years on track, so you can manage anything.
It just transforms their view of themselves and what they're capable of doing.
I think in the beginning of this year, I didn't know I actually could go to college. They went over my transcripts, and they told me the necessary steps that I needed to do. Throughout the course of this year, I worked really hard to get my grades up. I managed to get accepted to Cal State Long Beach and Cal State Dominguez Hills. And then, I decided to go to college, basically.
I just graduated last week. So, I know the system, I know how to pick the classes. Every time I go on their portals, I'm like, "Oh, I literally did this a few months ago."
Everything I needed, I just came, and she just did it like on sight, like right there.
Mr. Alcara kinda gave me advice about what to talk about, and so I did end up getting a scholarship.
I had a mix-up in my financial aid. I personally had like no idea how to sort it out, and that's where the Career Center guys came in.
Students who meet with an advisor are 14% more likely to visit a college campus. They're 19% more likely to apply for financial aid, 20% more likely to be admitted, and 27% more likely to submit their enrollment deposit.
All right, seniors, welcome to your decision day. You guys all made the decision to embark on your academic journey this coming fall, and we're proud of each and every one of you. So, congrats.
I feel proud. It's gonna be a major stepping stone.
It's something that I couldn't see myself doing a couple of years ago, but I'm gonna do it now, made up my mind.
It feels good, like I've worked very hard to get where I am.
I'm going to Cal State Long Beach.
I'm going to Cal Poly.
I'm going to UC Irvine.
I'm going to USC.
So, as you saw with the video, a lot of our advisors don't only work for students who are trying to go to like schools like USC, but schools as... The biggest feeder school is Cal State Long Beach, right? A lot of our students are trying to go to Cal State Long Beach. So, we help out students that are trying to go to different institutions. But after, or prior to that, something a bit about our advisors themselves. So, our advisors are... Come from all walks of life, very diverse group of individuals. When we started our program as a whole, we started in Garden Grove Unified with three advisors in 2013. Then, we've expanded now to forty-eight advisors currently. So, when we started our partnership with Long Beach, it was in 2014. And actually, I was one of the original advisors that started in '16. So, I myself was a prior college advisor. I was actually at Millikan High School. And during my time at Millikan High School, yes, a bit about myself. I actually used to work at a private sector job at a logistics company right on the next exit of Wilmington. So, the route here was pretty familiar to me. But through that, I realized that education was always a big key factor, because I myself navigated the whole... I mean, I'm a first-generation student myself. I went to UC Santa Barbara, and I got my master's in counseling at USC. But I saw the need, and I saw especially the need to help out not only students, but especially for myself, being a young man of color. Assisting young men of color persists. And I think when I got the position to be a college advisor and going to Millikan High School, I saw such a diverse group of students. And I mean, I was the only one at Millikan High School. I was kind of essentially given the keys to open up the college center again. And was told, "Here you go." Like, you know, let's make it happen. And I think all those 930 seniors are now current seniors, and it's cool to still keep in contact with a lot of them currently, because a lot of them are seniors at their institutions and are kind of reaching out to me. It's like, "Can you believe that because of you, I'm about to graduate college?" And creating that multi-generational change that their families, you know, saw. So, with that, a lot of our advisors are, for the most part, 72% of them are first generations themselves. 76% of our advisors are also Pell eligible. And with that, they come from... Like I mentioned, they come from all walks of life. And they also represent different universities. I think only like one of our current advisors, or two of them, went to USC, actually. But we are definitely heavily represented from all different UCs, many CSUs, and out-of-state and private schools. So, that kind of brings a fruitful discussion in terms of different options for our students. So, with that, next, I want to introduce one of the college advisors from Lakewood High School, Elisa Castillo.
Hi, everyone. My name is Elisa Castillo, and I am serving at Lakewood High School with a partner. I... So, I'm sorry. So, who we serve? So, in the last slide, you saw that we have forty-eight advisors in the USC Core. And so, of the forty-eight, we are located in forty-one high schools across nine districts and serving a total senior population of seventeen thousand students. And so, most of our students, or eighty percent of... Eighty-three percent of our students come from underrepresented communities, and eighty-four of which are from low-income families. And so, these numbers are very touching to me, because I too was... Am part of the underrepresented communities as a Latina, and I come from a low-income family. And so, my high school didn't really have the support that I needed, or like how my students have when deciding to go to college, being first-generation, being Latina. I didn't have the guidance. So, I had the goal and aspiration of going to college, but I didn't have someone help me. I started my college journey at a community college, at Long Beach City College in particular, where I then transferred to Cal State Long Beach and now currently working at a master's degree in Azusa Pacific. And so, my education background is very diverse. I have the community college, the Cal State, and the public institution. So, I can really relate to my students that are thinking of going to a community college but are afraid to voice it, because they feel that a community college is second-best, or they feel that a community college is, you know, it's not as prestigious as a four-year institution, especially going straight from their high school. And so, I'm a living representative to them, indicating that, hey, you can start at a community college and still be successful there and still achieve your dreams. And a funny story that I like to tell my students, or an experience, is I actually won Homecoming Queen at LBCC. And so, a lot of the times, I'm like, "You can win Homecoming Queen there." I was like, "Yeah, I did it, and I have a picture to show you." And so, this picture that is on the screen here is from Renaissance High School, and it's an image from last year. And this was a college application workshop. And so, given that this image was from last year, now we know where our students are going. And so, you have here depicted Long Beach City College. We have some state institutions like San Francisco. We have Sacramento as well. We have Cal Arts, a private institution. You know, some of our students are brave enough to go out of state, and we have Tuskegee University here. And so, again, it really goes to show that we're assisting all students in all of their post-high school options. And so, whether it's in-state, out-of-state, whether if it's staying near home. And so, we give them that option and give them that ability to explore. So, now, I'm gonna share my partner.
So, like Elisa said, I am her partner at Lakewood High School. My name is Carla Valise, and I have a different background, which makes our partnership at Lakewood work so well. I had the opportunity to go straight into a four-year university, and I went to Biola, which is a private Christian university. And I went... Now, I am attending USC, pursuing my master's in social entrepreneurship. So, I have this background, similarly to my students, of coming from a single mom, home, low-income, and first-generation Latina. But I did have this opportunity to go into a four-year, to dorm, to experience studying abroad, and sharing with students all the opportunities you can have. When I talk to them about going to Bolivia, about dorming, they start to get excited at seeing and knowing that that's part of an experience you can have as well, but that we can go to community college, a public school, and still have a diversity of experiences and enjoy our college experiences. And that's something that I am able to share and relay to our students when we are meeting and advising and talking to them about their options once they graduate high school. So, moving along with what we're sharing, with all the data that we're presenting and showing, we're really using a variety of sources to make sure that we are measuring our impact correctly. One of those sources is Grace. This is an advising tool that advisors are using to track our interactions, our daily interactions with students. We're also using a tool from Stanford. This is an independent analysis and evaluation of our program and our work, and it's something that is outside of us to give us insight into the impact that we are having. We also use the National Student Clearinghouse data to track where students are actually assisting and where they are retaining and persisting on as well. And along with all the private sources, there's also public sources available through UC and CSU data. And it's something that we're using to know how to best serve our students, where students are going from our high school, from Lakewood, whether it's Millikan, anywhere in the Long Beach District. Those are the sources that we are using.
So, student engagement. This is really important. Eighty-eight percent of our students have met with an advisor at least one, one time, either in a group setting or a one-to-one setting. That interaction increase... That one-to-one meeting increases where students come to us three or more times. And so, that's sixty-three percent of our students. Thirty-two will come back five or more times. And so, this shows that it doesn't take one setting. So, we meet with our students multiple times, either in a workshop setting or come to us one-to-one. But they don't... We don't just see them one time and figure it out in that one setting. It's like, no, it takes multiple meetings, you know, multiple reassurance and multiple check-ins. And so, that's really important. And so, sixty-eight percent of our seniors have met with an advisor and created some form of individualized plan. And so, usually, that happens in the beginning of the year, and then, we're constantly meeting with them throughout the entire year. Eighty percent of our seniors have been met in a group setting. And so, these are classroom presentations, maybe lunchtime presentations or after-school presentations as well. And so, engagement is really important, especially the one-to-one settings. And I want to share with you all a story. And so, I had a student come to me sometime around April, I want to say... I mean, not April, sometime around March. So, January, March. This is around the time where students are starting to receive their award letters. I mean, their acceptances or possibly denials. And so, unfortunately, I had a student that came to me with a letter in her hand, and she told me that she was denied from her dream school of Cal State Channel Islands. And so, she came to me expressing... She was sad, but she was already ready to face her facts and say, "Okay, what's my Long Beach City College options?" But I told her, "No, let's see what we can do. Let's look at your application. Let's see if there's... There might have been an error that we can maybe appeal or start an appeal process." And so, I looked on her application. I had her log back in. I found the mistake, and I expressed to her, "You know, this was a mistake. It was... You maybe slightly oversaw it, but let's come together, work together, create an appeal." And so, I helped her draft an appeal. I helped her find an envelope to put the information in that envelope and gave her directions on how to go to a post office. She didn't know where the post office, where one was located. And so, I kind of guided her, asked, "This is what you're gonna do. This is what you're gonna go up to the front counter and tell them what you need. Make sure you get a tracking number. Students don't know that." And so, I gave her a little paper, and she kind of took it with her. A few weeks after that session, she came back to me with a big smile on her face, saying that she got accepted to Cal State Channel Islands, which was her number-one school of choice. And it's also... Another reason why she wanted to go there is because she has a sister that goes there as well. And so, she really wanted to go there because she felt comfortable going there. It's her number-one school. But what's really important is a story... From this story is that, like other students, they're just gonna... They're gonna receive that denial letter, and then, they're just gonna want to go to a community college or go to the other options. But if there's a way that we can get them straight to that four-year, we're gonna try to make that happen. But we're also not gonna deter them. It's like, okay, if you don't want to go to the four-year and you want to go to the two-year, that's equally fine. But what makes it special is that she was able to get to her dream school in the end.
Elisa, quick question about the data, since you're up and you just spoke to it. So, the percentages here of seniors are... These seniors are who or where?
Yeah, so, these are our Long Beach numbers.
Okay.
Yeah. And so, right now, we have a total of over four thousand senior students. And so, this is to date. These numbers are still increasing because we're still doing one-on-one meetings. And so, we're tracking interactions all the way up until they graduate. So, we are helping students with housing applications. We're still helping with financial aid applications. And then, our community college, our Long Beach City College partnership, we're getting a lot of... Helping with students onboarding that. And so, that's increasing our interactions as well.
Let me make sure I heard this right. So, of all the seniors at all high schools in Long Beach, you've met with at least one time, eighty-eight percent of the seniors?
Mm-hmm.
How do we find time to do that during the day, may I ask?
I'm sorry?
How do you find time for these kids to meet with you during the day?
So, it's all through collaboration. And so, we collaborate with teachers to get into the classroom. We advertise for lunchtime meetings. We do after-school workshops as well. And so, it's a lot of collaboration and teamwork within the whole, all the high schools.
Fabulous. And what kind of notice do you give in advance so they can plan for that?
So, usually, we have flyers. Usually, we'll meet with teachers, and they're off... They're off... They're... Usually, they have an off period, conference period. Thank you for that. We'll go into them to make sure that we're finding them on available times where they're not meeting with students.
Very good.
And so, even if it takes us coming in early to go to the staff meeting, just to make that available. So, we use email, we use flyers, we use the Overcom as well. And so, many different...
That's great, thank you.
So, this data on this slide is actually showcasing our CAC-wide impact. We'll have another slide showcasing more of the Long Beach impact. But we want to start sharing from our last year the impact that we're having across all of our high schools. First, we helped over ten thousand students apply to college. And over forty thousand applications were submitted to various institutions, whether they're community, four-year colleges, private. Over three thousand of these students were helped register for the SAT or ACT. And of the students that applied to college, from everything that we are tracking, over nine thousand students were accepted to their... To one or more of their colleges. Over seven thousand of these students submitted their FAFSA with our assistance, and they received over fifty million dollars in financial aid through our assistance in helping them fill out the FAFSA, the California Dream Act, or even scholarships that they may be applying to as well. And the student we have here on this slide is our student from last year. He went to Cal Poly Pomona, and he's someone that we actually keep in touch with, Elisa and I, and seeing how he is doing at his school now that he's dorming there. And he just goes to showcase... When we're highlighting all of these numbers, they represent a face, a student that we have built a connection with, and we know their stories, we know their backgrounds. So, this is really the wide impact we're having. But as we're throwing out all of these numbers, they represent families, students, and all of their stories as well. So, we'll move on. Elisa, we'll share a little more.
So, these are our Long Beach numbers. And this is to date. And so, this was polled as of last week. And again, a lot of these numbers will be increasing as we start getting community college enrollments in there. We start having other students applying to FAFSA, because the FAFSA is still... Students that are going to the community college are still eligible to apply. So, as of date, about two thousand two hundred and forty-six students have been assisted in applying to college. There have been six thousand six hundred and ten applications submitted with advisor assistance. And to date as well, there's a thousand three hundred and sixty-two acceptances so far. And again, that number will be increasing as more different institutions release their admissions decisions at different times. And so, by the end of this month, early April, we should have all final decisions out. Two thousand... About two thousand students have already been or have been assisted submitting their FAFSA. Again, that number is ongoing. We are still hosting workshops for that. Our twelve hundred students were assisted in registering for the SAT or ACT for the second time. And so, these are students that want to apply again and increase our chances of getting a better score on the SAT. And again, about six hundred and thirty-three thousand students have received aid to date. Again, we're still waiting on award letters from institutions that usually take about mid-April to end-April to receive those award letters so we can see how much money these institutions are giving our students.
So, Elisa, I'm gonna ask it again, just because it's so impressive. I want to make sure it gets reiterated. So, you've assisted approximately half of all of our seniors with their applications to college?
Yes.
Up to this point?
The Long Beach advisors have assisted.
Yeah, that's great. That's great.
And again, this is ongoing. We're still helping students. We... There are still private institutions that have rolling admissions. And so, again, if we find a student that has increased their SAT And so again, if we find a student that has increased their SAT and they really want to make, we'll find that school for them and make that happen.
So as you can see by our impact and the student interaction is very vital. One of the accomplishments that I do want you all to be aware of is kind of, two of our schools are actually FAFSA completion state champs, which means they scored the highest in terms of the number of FAFSA's that were completed, not only submitted, but were checked and ready to go. And two of our schools, as you can see, are Long Beach Poly and Wilson High School. Some of the other schools that are noted, there are also other schools that are within our core, but Long Beach and Wilson are amongst those top 70 out of 2,000 schools there. So with that, Carla also talked about some of the data that we use in our partnership with Stanford. And Stanford, essentially what they want to see is the impact that our advisors have at the schools. So what they do is they give a survey to advisors, and advisors administer the survey to all seniors within that class. And afterwards, they give some data in terms of what students have said about working with advisors. And some of the data points are 17% more likely to apply to at least one college, 11% more likely to have at least one college acceptance, 15% more likely to apply for a scholarship, 19% more likely to submit the FAFSA. But for me, a very important percentage is they are 87% of all seniors said a USC college advisor influenced their college decision. So when we talk about creating decisions, it's also important about who we are talking to. So not only are we targeting certain students, kind of like how I mentioned prior, but our interaction with all students, and that also includes students from different, or from a diverse ethnicity background. So as you can see through the chart, our advisors definitely interact, is keeping it very equitable in terms of the different ethnicities they are interacting with. And also the, not only with the one-plus interaction, but the three-plus interaction. So the diverse in conversation that they are having with different students from all backgrounds. With that, when we talk about equity in advising, we're also talking about the, where our students are applying, the equity in terms of our ethnicities, in terms of their applying for two-year and four-year. And as you can see in the two-year, there's still work to be done, of course, but a lot of our Latino students are applying in two years. And when you look at our four-years' applications where students are applying, it tends to be a little bit more equitable, but we know there's a lot, a lot of more work that needs to be done as well. However, with that, even though, well, with that 22%, according to the NSC data, is from the LA County Public Schools, is where it is in terms of the equity numbers. So when we talk about the Long Beach specific, where we are kind of gathering where our UC and CSU enrollment data is, we kind of created a baseline. Prior to the program starting, we kind of looked at three years prior to our program starting and kind of created an average percentage of where our baseline number is, where students are going to a UC and CSU. So prior to our program, it was about 42% average. Two years into our program, after 2016, we saw a 6% increase to 48% from 42% of 48% increase in terms of UC and CSU enrollment. Now, where the collaboration is very much key is district support makes all the difference. Not only to endure program sustainability, but of course also meeting the strategic goals that are in place. And how do we go about that? So for the goal number one, in terms of providing high-quality academic programs that meet the needs of every student and accelerate the closing of the achievement gap, the way we do that is the collaboration of the district by first and foremost allowing us to use data systems such as Elroy to be able to pull data and be able to use the data to see, okay, where are the students' GPAs, where ethnicities, gender, different types of data points where we can target certain students, and also meet that academic, and target students that might be in that academic middle like we talked about. So any students, their GPA ranging from 2.0 to 3, or 3.3, first-generation students who never heard the word college. I mean, me myself as an advisor, I remember I actually had a student who's now, has an internship for Chevron, didn't even know what college was, was a student who came in with a hoodie and a headphone on his ear, and then was just walking around, but because his friend went into the college center, and I told him, I was like, are you applying to college? He was like, no one has even told me what college is. And now he's working at, he has an internship for Chevron, electrical engineer, made it, very different story, but never heard college until he's, his senior year, he thought he just had to get good grades because that's what good students do. So a lot of that stuff, it comes through the collaboration of being able to identify certain students and meeting certain data points. With that also goal for is the increase of high school and college readiness for every student. And how do we go about that is creating, like Elisa and Carla talked about, creating workshops that not only pertain to certain students, but also having financial aid workshops that target also parent interactions. How do we make our parents more involved? How do we also get our students to, not only are applying for FAFSA, but are undocumented students who are applying for the California Dream Act? Also for students who don't know much English and they're still, they bring their parents, they're like, oh, do you have a FAFSA presentation in Spanish? Hosting workshops like that. And also allowing them to see what the best option is for their personal accomplishments. And all of that isn't, is not only possible without the district, but it's also possible through the collaborations they built with teachers, counselors, assistant principals, principals, and it's all possible because through that collaboration. And with that, I would just say, thank you very much, and here is a picture of our home floor. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any more questions or?
Yes. It's too bad you guys are at USC. I'm just playing, but actually I'm not. So a couple of questions. It would be cool if you, don't already track, if you were able to track outcomes across the different touchpoints. So whether we see, you know, what differences we see for those students that you've had, five contact points versus three versus one, the one-on-one setting versus the group setting. Do you, do you track that, do you know?
Yeah, so, I mean, let me just kind of go back to this, just so I can kind of, in terms of this slide, right, correct? So there is a, so the system that we use to track this is our GRACE point, which is essentially they document, we have every advisor document everything from types of interactions they've had, the types of conversations they've had with students. It also is pretty limited because it is a, pretty much, the database itself allows us only to see these certain key points.
Got it.
But we would have to do our own, like, we would have to adapt our own Excel sheets to figure that out, but it's definitely possible.
But you have an awesome Dr. Lund here who I'm sure would also be interested to know. And again, we're looking at it from, so what is the difference in terms of impact, right? Because we obviously have data on which seniors you're having contact with, and then where those seniors end up. So if we could disaggregate what, how many touchpoints they had with you, that would be really interesting to find out. Because then, my second question, the, the data, I think it's three slides forward after this, it's where you are tracked, where we're tracking the LBOSD partnership, actually a couple more, one more, it's a bar graph. One more, I guess it was more than a couple. It's the one where the baseline was 42%, and then we looked at 47%, 48%. Because, you know, the other part of this is sort of what we're doing as a district in combination with, whether it's supplemental or in alignment with what you all are doing, how we can sort of look at some best practices that way, right? So let's say as an example, it's three touchpoints with you versus their participation and some of the other things that we're doing as a district, then, then we got a formula there that we could start looking at. So I'm looking over at Dr. Lund again, over here, he's nodding his head, yeah. So just wanted to make sure that, if we're not already thinking about that, and I, and I know your intention wasn't here to say this is because of you all, you know, exclusively, but it would be interesting to find out what you all are doing. And I'm not, you know, I understand it's a partnership, but sort of the model that you're using versus the strategies and initiatives that you're using, where's that sweet spot?
Okay.
That, that we're looking for. So I, I just commend the work that you're all doing, thank you to our district, Mr. Superintendent, for moving forward on these kinds of collaborations. How many advisors do we have here?
Fourteen.
Okay, that was what you said.
Fourteen, these big high schools.
Yeah, so yes, kind of to add on to that, since, I mean, when I started, we were only six advisors, so yes, for the six comprehensive high schools. But the need of the schools are so large, especially with the amount of students, that it expanded to the partnership with, which Elisa and Carla, only the smaller schools that we serve, like Renaissance and McBride, have one advisor per.
All of you are advisors?
No, I'm the program director, R. Ousmane at USC, so I get to support all the great work that they're doing in this school.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I feel that our district does so many things for student success as far as, you know, college and career readiness. We provide free training for SAT, the SAT, a lot of other preparations that way. But I, I don't think there's a substitute for that face-to-face meeting, for that personal touch. Oh, and our college and career readiness guide, or the report that we just started, I want to say a year and a half ago, about, these are all great tools that we have to help kids get into college. But for a student to have the opportunity to meet with somebody who they can relate to, that, that maybe can be inspirational, I don't, I don't know if there's a substitute for that because it's one thing for us to put out a report or for us to provide, you know, testing and that kind of thing. But unless you have somebody that tells you, look, I came from a situation that you're in, whatever it is, you know, the, you know, socioeconomic status, the culture, the whatever, and I know it can be done, that will speak volumes as to, you know, how somebody is gonna aspire to go to college. Or just having somebody answer the question, what is college and why should I go? And I imagine that you've had the opportunity to help so many students as far as financial aid. I was at an event last month where we had a former student speak about how she didn't want to be a burden on her family, and so she didn't aspire to go to college because she knew her family couldn't afford it. But for our students to have somebody to talk to and maybe express that fear or that concern, and for you to be able to say, no, it's possible, and this is how, that, that's, you know, invaluable. So thank you for what you do, I'm very happy and proud that we can have a collaboration like that. And it just takes all hands on deck to make sure our students achieve to their full potential.
Can I just add, yes, a quick story? Because I think you actually touched upon something that I would like for you all to know. Because I think the student stories are very vital. And I do want to say when I was, during my second year as an advisor between 2015 to 2016, so the class of 2016, I actually had a student who, he was, I guess he was dubbed the class clown, was trying to apply to every school, he was trying to apply to an HBCU school, and he was applying to almost all of them, but his GPA wasn't that great, and I think he didn't realize the concept of college until later on. But I think his perseverance to want to try, ultimately he was gonna end up going to Long Beach City College. However, during my, the year after, when I actually became a program coordinator, I had learned that he had passed away of heart cancer, and, which is, you know, he was barely 20, you know, if not 19. But I think when you talk about, like, when you talk about the student stories and kind of the option, I think I'll never forget the optimism that he felt about striving to be a better person later on in life, even though early on he had a lot of myths, a lot of hiccups. So I just wanted to kind of say that because I think it touched upon the point that you definitely stated.
Fabulous work, thank you very much.
Dennis, one last question, do you all collect any data, whether it's qualitative or reflections from students on sort of themes that you probably intuitively know and hear about, but you know where we can nuance, maybe, you know, feedback and input from our undocumented students? You know, do you all collect any information?
We don't collect.
I'm talking about reflections, right, not, not like data.
Okay. I wouldn't say data specifically, like, we don't collect that stuff like it's just part of the job description, but it's something that our advisors hear and are always sharing. And sometimes we share stories where we feel like if there is an opportunity for a student to voice their story, like if there's a conference, we're like, oh, this student would be good. Of course, with the consent of parents and all that stuff that follows. But we have had students that have voiced their stories about growing up in Long Beach, growing up undocumented, growing up being part of the LGBTQIA community, and sharing that story with folks, but nothing really has shared. But it's something that we can always do moving forward as well.
It's always, I think, important and really awesome to uplift those stories, right? We talk about students, again, with similar backgrounds as yourselves, you know, going to MIT, right, first in their family. I think, as you all, as President Craig had mentioned, you all are an inspiration. I think there are also peers amongst the students that could serve as inspiration for themselves. And, you know, many times these are stories that we probably don't have an opportunity to hear and are for students to share. So I think it's also important to uplift those stories.
Yeah, also, yes, kind of like a quick story in regards to your question about the story. So the young gentleman you saw there that had the dreads from Wilson High School, he actually is a college aide through another college access program at Cal State Long Beach, and he's actually at Wilson, he's a second year. So he is going back to give back to his communities.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
So next, we're gonna have a second part of it, and again, folks helping our young people on college and career readiness. And so our job developers, I'm calling Cindy up, Cindy Bader.
Still morning, right, good morning?
Good morning.
Thank you, thank you for allowing us to come and share the work that we're doing. Over the last year, the high school office and the special education office has partnered together to advance the workplace learning and career exploration and readiness of component-of-the-link learning. So by sharing our resources and expertise with the Transition Partnership Program, we have been able to, well, the Transition Partnership Program focuses on career-ready skills for special education students. So between them and the high school office, we have been able to expand and grow career exploration and work readiness experiences such as job exploration, which includes guest speakers and career interest surveys, workplace readiness, skills such as resume writing, interview skills, dress for success, work experience, including paid and unpaid internships, job shadows, work placements, counseling, and post-secondary options, and self-advocacy. Through our work together, we have been able to hire additional job developers, and now we can place a job developer at each of our six comprehensive high schools, and then the small schools upon request. The job developers now serve more students, both general education and special education students than they've been able to do. The college and, I'm sorry, they do it through the college and career centers and also through in-class presentations. The college and career centers provide a centralized place on campus for students to come to receive information and support in post-secondary and career options, job readiness training, and work experience placements. The in-class presentations introduce career exploration and career readiness skills to the students at the request of the teachers. And then students can receive further assistance by coming to the career centers or by going to their teachers. So today, I have two of those job developers here who are gonna share their experience in this, the first year out that we've been working, and some really exciting data. So we have Karina Agis from Jordan and Fatima Nelson from Cabrillo. And I just wanted to introduce Charles Lomack, who is, works with the job developers at all of the sites. So Karina?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Aston D. said, my name's Karina Agis, and I am the career developer at Jordan High School. We have been able to serve our students at a grander scale, I've been there for three years. And this year, the high school office actually created a college and career readiness team, and that is comprised of the college and career specialist, the career transition specialist, a lead counselor at Jordan High School, the work-based learning coordinator, and then the pathway coordinator in order for OS to basically take our services, our student services through TPP, and expand those services to our general education students. We have been able to serve about 500 walk-in general education students, and that is basically the students are coming in, and it's a kind of whatever they would like to do, most of it focused on resume development, job application preparation, and interviewing techniques. We also specialize in doing the in-class career module presentations. And this year, I was able to actually go in and present, excuse me, in SDC and RSP classrooms, which have allowed me to collaborate with the special education teachers on campus, and they are now referring students to the Transition Partnership Program. This year, at the end of the school year, I'm very excited because the TPP program is very near and dear to my heart. I think we have like great services for our students through that program. And we'll be able to enroll over 50 TPP student participants compared to 15 the year prior. We are also increasing the local job market awareness to our students by sending all Jordan High School job leads every two weeks. And although some of the students are too young to apply to the positions that we're sending out, they will come and seek our assistance for additional services. And so we have partnered with Pacific Gateway, and we send a lot of our students, we refer them to Pacific Gateway for a paid work internship experience. We have about 20 freshmen at Jordan who have been referred to Pacific Gateway, and some of them are even working at Jordan. I have two students who are in the janitorial field, and they are actually like kind of shadowing the janitors at Jordan High School and get paid for their services. In addition, we're also very, very fortunate to partner with Lyuna at Jordan High School to bring the Stark Construction Program on campus, which offers a pre-apprenticeship construction program. This year, we have 19 students currently enrolled in that program, which after high school completion, they can all go into a high-wage-paying job, and they're graduating with their OSHA 10 certification. So if they're not looking to go into that field, they can use that in a different field that they'd like to. I also wanted to briefly discuss our interview bootcamp event. This is put together by our Transition Partnership Program, this is an annual event. This year will be our 15th annual year that we're putting this event on. And this is where we invite local community organizations, we invite employers who are really eager to work with our students. And our, if selected, our TPP students will be able to interview for these positions. And, you know, I just think, seeing our students the first day they walk into us, where they're nervous, very soft-spoken, not very sure of themselves, to see them the day of this event where they're literally dressed in interview attire, and some of them even come up to us and tell us, like, do I look like a manager? And yes, they do. So I really do believe that the career developers on site are taking our students' barriers and their disabilities and turning them into superpowers, and allowing our students to see their strengths and seeing that they are worthy to apply for positions that they didn't think they could before. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And just a point of clarification, the Transition Partnership Program is part of our youth employment network, and it specifically targets transition skills, work readiness skills for our special education students, and is part of the youth employment network.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, and thank you. So appreciate to have the opportunity to come and share some of this work that we've been really excited about. I am very new to the Transition Partnership Program. This is my first year to the program and also to Cabrillo High School. And I wanted to talk in particular about what I consider our recipe. Anyone who's worked at these schools, you know, each one is kind of a different animal, even when you have best practices. And so this is what has worked for us at Cabrillo High School. And I wanted to start with talking about the administrative support that we've had. So all across the board, the vision was laid, has been laid out from the top to bottom. And we wouldn't have been able to achieve, I think, as much as we did this year without this, this support. So, you know, Mr. Davis making it clear what's, you know, that career is also important, I think, to our high schools and not just college. And then having Cindy Bader and Charles Lomack and others come in and help us with the introductions to the principals and the site teams to say, you know, this is what we'd like to offer our services, and we hope that you make them a part of the team here. And then to have the school site principal really welcome us into the fold at each of our sites. And then to have the school site principal really welcome us into the fold at each of our sites. And at Cabrillo, Ms. Cornejo gave me a center space at the career center. So I am one of the first things the students see when they walk in the door. And I just keep my signage really simple. I just have jobs, jobs, jobs across the front. And so they are excited to see me, and I'm excited to see them. So we've had, you know, at least, and I think I'm undercutting the number, about 350 walk-in students. And, you know, I love hearing the USC advisors do their presentation because in the career center, I think, when things are really meshing the way that they're supposed to, we are tag-teaming our students. So if, even if they come in just to see the SC advisors, they are more than happy to pass the baton when they're talking to the kids about scholarships. And they say, "Okay, you need a resume?" Well, you need to go see Ms. Nelson about that, and she can help you with something like, and vice versa. So we've had lots of walk-ins. I make myself available to help them develop their resumes. If they've gotten the job offer, they need help with interviewing skills, then I'm working with them one-on-one on that. But again, with the school implementation plan, our CCR team or the college and career readiness team that Karina described, we have something similar at Cabrillo. The Ms. Cornejo, I guess, had gotten some feedback at one of her quarterly meetings that they needed. They had some gaps with career services. So in job development talk, she kind of presented a whiffing question. So what's in it for me? I mean, it's great to have you here, but what can you do to help us to support our, you know, us achieving our goals here? And so the high school office, in conjunction with transition partnership program, had developed these amazing career readiness modules. These are, you know, PowerPoints with supportive documents that we can use to go out and do in-class presentations on, with young people on resume development, career exploration, elevator pitch, and other, and I think five others. And so I said, "Well, I have these modules that I can use." And she said, "Well, great. Well, then we can, you can take requests from teachers who, you know, would like you to come in." And I said, "Well, let's do one better. How about we, I offer that we go in and talk to all of your ninth graders and start that conversation early about career exploration." So that's what we did. We decided to target all ninth graders at the site and make sure that they receive information about the basic steps to, you know, planting a seed on, when they're beginning their journey, on deciding what careers are good for them. They, part of that career exploration is them also kind of completing a personality assessment. And then we show them tools or that they can use online that show them different kind of job options that match up with their interests. And then I tell them all the time during the presentation, "And in respecting your mind, I want you to have a conversation with Ms. Nelson about what market viability is and how that can touch your, or how that might affect your decision about what career you eventually foreclose on." And so we talk about theoretically what link learning is and why these pathways at the schools have been identified, and some of the more viable careers that might support them 10 to 15 years from now when they're exiting school. So that's career exploration. And then we also decided to offer resume development and interviewing techniques to all 11th graders with the idea that we're going to have one more year with them. They, a lot of them are 16, just turning 16, and now are eligible to actually work. So let's make sure that they're prepared. So that's been, I think, really successful. And we've, I want to say, we've been able to touch around 443 ninth-grade students and about 458 11th graders. And again, just taking the best practices that we've used in transition partnership program of really kind of honing in on a step-by-step, a one-on-one model, keeping things very basic and concrete in the conversation so that we can reach our young people. So I have, I think, last year, the caseload for transition partnership program was only around 12 students. We've grown that to 40. Of the 58 in-class presentations we were able to do since the beginning of the school year on career readiness models, I want to say about 20 of them were two special needs education classes alone. And I have been able to create about 700 resumes with the students at Cabrillo. Some of the tools that we've used, our young people are very familiar with Google Classroom. They use it every day with their teachers for homework and other class assignments. So I decided to make it, develop a TPP classroom. And so when I go in and talk to the kids, I said, "I'm not talking at you. This is going to be your conversation. Get your Chromebooks out and log into this classroom and download this resume template that I have for you. And then I want you to start creating your resume with me right now so that hopefully by the end of this conversation, you walk away with a professional, or at least the foundation for a professional-looking resume." And so that's how we, I think, been successful in getting a lot of these created. And the kids are feeling empowered that they have it. They, it's already saved because we're doing it in Google Docs. So they get access to it wherever they are. And they're coming in, back into the center when they, and they say, "Now I'm ready to apply. Do you have your resume?" "Ah, actually, yes. You came in to the presentation. I do have something that I can use right now." So we work one-on-one to tweak it and then get them applying to as many jobs and internship opportunities as possible. And I think having that tool in their toolbox has really been effective in opening more doors and positioning our young people to take more advantage of local job opportunities. We print up a list every month of the, you know, local kind of part-time job opportunities. And I make that kids know they can, they don't even have to speak to me. They can just come in, grab the list off my desk, and go to a computer in the career center and start applying and let me know if they need my help with questions on the application. But I, we also make it available on Cabrillo's website. And get it out and I, print out copies and hand it out to the teachers so they can post it in their rooms as well when needed. Most recently, at Cabrillo, we, because we have the Academy of Global Logistics, we, they have a special partnership with the Port of Long Beach, and they had a special internship that they wanted more young people to take advantage of. So doing that groundwork of working with all of our 11th graders to get their resumes created at the beginning of the school year, I'd like to think positioned them a lot more when it was internship time to, you know, say, "Now you're ready. You already have one of the tools that you need in order to apply. So let's, let's take advantage of this opportunity." It was a little easier to go back in after I'd already developed a relationship with them through creating resumes. So we, one, another initiative that we've kind of decided as a CCR team to develop for our young people that will be happening very, very soon. And I was excited to, when we walked in, to hear some of your building and construction personnel talking about their work because this, these are just the kinds of folks that we are inviting for what we're calling a Career Options Fair. Because, again, we love all of the focus on college. But a lot of our transition partnership students and others at the school who are taking advantage of Long Beach City College and the certificate programs that they're offering there need to know more about how they can tap into apprenticeships, jobs that are supported through unions in the area. So we're asking all of those people to come out and talk to our young people directly about how they can sign up immediately for those opportunities. So this is a fair that's targeting our senior population. And we've got contractors and carpenters and electricians and police officers and animators and IT specialists and others that, who are coming out and talking to our kids about trades and other opportunities. Some of the lessons, I think, that we've learned from doing this work, I, after, you know, from looking at resume after resume after resume over the course of the year, we've been able to identify and group in one-on-one gaps, I think, in our young people's experiences. And so I, I've been able to have a really concrete conversation with them and say, "Okay, so now we're in the experience section of your resume. How many of you have work experience?" One or two hands go up. "Okay, so employers, you know, at this age, they consider volunteer experience, work experience. How many of you have had a volunteer experience?" Couple more hands go up. And then I say, "Now, how many of you don't have anything to put in this section?" We have more that go up then. And I say, "Well, Ms. Nelson's telling you that you need to have something in there by the end of the school year in order for you to be viable for the work, working world, for college, and other opportunities." And I think they understand that when we're having or entering that conversation through, through these portals. They're feeling more empowered, we think, again, to take advantage of internship opportunities when they do emerge, instead of coming in when it's due, an application is due and saying, "You know, you really need to fill this out. This is a great opportunity." Hopefully, if we're having the conversations early and often, they have the context more for why they, these things are important. So we're very excited to be working with the young people. We hope to continue to do the work and do even more next year. So thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I think that really balances out that presentation and just demonstrates how many options we have for the students.
President, I know we're short on time. We need to move to the other item on the agenda. But just a couple of quick comments, questions? Dr. Brown, I'm wondering if CAC would be interested in hearing a version of some of these doors and opportunities for students?
Thanks for bringing that up. We actually, earlier in the year, end of last year and earlier this year, had a presentation that was a lot like this, just to share the range of opportunities. And we can always do more.
Great, great. And then, Mr. Superintendent, so with our student college dashboard, if you will, how, so if I'm in the ninth grade going into the 10th grade, and then for whatever reasons, right? We want everyone to go to college. We want everyone to have the opportunity to go to college. I'm veering off the, you know, four-year college track. How are we integrating some of these career readiness opportunities for those students that then by the 10th, 11th grade could be very easily disincentivized from even caring about that? Maybe in their minds thinking, "Well, I'm not going to go to college anyway." So...
Well, remember, the college career guide is a living document that comes out twice. So you would do your class presentations with your teacher and with the parents and so on. You would talk about that if you're off track. Or if you're changing, remember, we get the information from the students, if your career interests change and what other avenues to go. And that's the beauty of the job developers, through their modules that they present. So there's multiple ways to connect so that hopefully no one would veer off on anything. So whether it be the college track or the certificate track, the military track, or the career track right away. So that's the beauty of the tool. And then the other part is that you have these bodies who are actually at the schools working with all the, our youngsters, with our regular counselors and their teachers and so on. So it's, remember, it goes back to what we talked about, the quadrant. It's a collaborative approach by all parties involved. I mean, if you think about it, we have a lot of partners helping us, like we saw with the villages, to do our work because we can't do it by ourselves. And, you know, I thought I got a great education in Long Beach, and I know I did. But I had one counselor back then for probably about 700 kids. So the beauty today is there are multiple more people who are talking about a lot of different options for everybody. So it's pretty cool and trying to enhance our best practices.
Well, also, I'd like to add to that. There are certain skills that all of our students would benefit from, whether they intend to go directly into a job after high school or college. Those interview skills, how to present yourself, that type of thing. Those are skills that we all need just to succeed in life. So I don't know if that was part of your question, Dr. Benitez?
I think more on how easily it can be to be discouraged if you don't have other doors and opportunities in front of you as much as the college doors and opportunities. And, you know, by no means am I suggesting, you know, that, you know, we're tracking students necessarily in any direction. But, you know, if I'm an 11th grader and I'm not looking, and I'm looking at, you know, GPA requirements and standardized scores requirements, and I'm not there, sort of what other incentives do I have to then be able to feel motivated, encouraged, have confidence that that's not the end for me? That I still need to work hard precisely to gather other skill sets and content knowledge to be successful in a career, potentially? And not to rule out that I can go back to college or go to the community college track, but that that's not sort of, that we're not limiting the perceptions of what the possibilities are. So I guess we're talking about the same thing.
I think so. I think so. I think we're, I think that our collective message is that we value the students and not just the college-bound students.
That's right.
Okay, good.